All right, we're going, it's 5:01. Good evening or good afternoon, everybody, and raining at the moment. Actually, it sort of looks like sun.
Can you run the meeting, Derek?
All right, so let's get going. Any changes or additions to the agenda?
There is not.
Any public comments from anyone? Okay, consent agenda. Could I get a motion to approve, please? Andrew and Jess. What have you got with consent agenda?
Yeah, I'll start with enrollment. Actually, we're, we slipped, we're, we're seven students behind where we were last year at this time as enrollments come and go. It's interesting in that most of that is in pre-tech. So last year at this time, we had over 20 pre-tech students. We don't have that this year. So we got more student enrollment in regular programming and less in pre-tech. We carried close to 32 kids all year long. Derek did a little, reached out to BF and it's a really small incoming class from for the ninth graders there, and there is some action happening as far as pre-tech scheduling at Green Mountain. They were actually in the middle of it today. So see some movement there. There's any pluses or any minuses, but we probably will have less BF enrollment in pre-tech just because they're having a small ninth grade class incoming. Did you want to add anything to the conversation you had now?
No, you didn't.
Yeah. On a positive note, carpentry, health sciences, industrial trades, criminal justice has very strong enrollments this year, culinary arts as usual, and business management, and for anybody that's been on the board for a lot of years, that is hard work, determination, and word of mouth, and I couldn't be prouder of. She's built that program back up. She had 14 students signed up, and there were years where that program was, we would have taken action in April to cut the halftime to see how, and we don't have to worry about that. So I just want to recognize the work that Jen has done there. We're showing, and Christine, I'm going to ask her to help me if I get this wrong. We're going to show, we're going to show a surplus of, just shy of $1,200 from the local budget. We've frozen the budget. We're monitoring it closely and see where we finish. We are doing some spending related to some of the national trips that we have going on. But what it looks like is we're using reserve funds to bolster the budget because we knew it was going to be a hard year, and that was a decision that we made. Some of that has to do with is that we wanted to lessen the impact on our sending schools when they were experiencing less revenues from COVID. So we've made a conscious step. We thought we'd use about $95,000, but it looks like we're only going to use $43,000 this year, which is great, very positive development. I will say that we were dealt a bit of a curve ball. The dual enrollment, we deal with New Hampshire. So in New Hampshire, we can't use the vouchers we get from the Vermont State College system, but the agency of education in the past has set aside funds out of their Perkins allocation so that centers that use a different vendor than this Vermont State College system or CCV has funds to pay for those. They did it last year. Well, this year, we, I think, are going to spend about $13,000 or is it $16,000, Christina, doing all this stuff?
Um, it's going to be closer to 16. We're going to try and get 3,000 back from the state, but it's, I'm, I'm not, that's not concrete.
Yeah, so they had 3,000 and we spent 16,000. So that's going to become a local expense. That $43,000 reserve is, is considerate and considerate of that $16,000. So it won't be like next month, oh, well, whoops. That is inclusive of that. So the problem with that is because those were Perkins funds, we can't put that in our local Perkins funds. So we're going to own that in the future as a local expense. So we'll have to consider that. We didn't budget for it, and we'll have to see how that goes. But not the best news, but it, 16,000 does reflect, a lot of kids are getting to enrollment credits, which is a very good thing. So that's it.
Just comment on the enrollment piece. There's been a post that you guys posted on social media yesterday showing the programs that still had openings. So like, share, you know, promote, hopefully drives, you know, more kids in.
And the reason we put that up is that the 15th of May is the date when we start taking sophomore. And so that starts closing out. If you're an incoming junior and you haven't gotten around to it, if you don't get around to it, you may get closed out because now sophomores, or if you're a senior that, hey, I want to take a tech program my last year, you may lose your seat if you don't do it by May 15.
All right. Any questions on any of the items Scott spoke about or anything in the consent agenda?
I just asked a question from my own learning. Why is it that we use New Hampshire instead of Vermont? Is it just because of the location or?
It, it is location. It is, it's harder to work with the Vermont State Colleges for stuff. There's more red tape, more hassle. And there's other tech centers that do that. I think our students are more likely to go to the community college over there than here. Quick example, Mr. Gray is a professor at Vermont State University. In order to get dual enrollment credit for Vermont State University, he would have to cement his weekly lesson plans to the department he used to work for. He gives those same credits when he does evening classes to adults, but they don't want to lose that possible revenue. So we could do it. Some of our programs do do it, but we just have found it, it's easier to work with.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions, comments?
We have stated that case on a state basis, yes, and maybe have not made friends with that one.
I'm on the state college board, and I also have made that case a few times. All right. Anything else on the consent agenda? Questions? Those in favor, please raise hands or say aye. Any opposed? Thank you. All right. Old Business VTVLC, Ashley.
So I will start off by our financial report, and again, I always start by thinking Christine and Nancy for keeping us on track financially. So our projected deficit last month was around 325,000, and that has now shifted to 267,000. And this has basically been due to an increase in revenue from various sources. So whether we've reduced our department's money, we've increased in our CDP or custom projects or adjunct pay, which is reduced amount. And our hope is that we will have our proposed FY26 budget for you in June.
Can you folks on Zoom hear her? Okay. Okay, just making sure.
Any questions about that? Or hearing them. So the interim director's report, I will, I'm not going to read. Do I have to do what you like? Okay, good, thanks. I won't read everything. It's been a very busy month.
You get the same treatment I get, like, come on.
Saying is I shall read slowly in my It's been a really busy month at VTVLC, you can see. Things that I will highlight is that we finally took our marine biology trip to Little Caymans. So if you were here last year, you will know that a hurricane came through the Caymans the day before we were supposed to leave. We were on track to leaving, and then the plane in Burlington would not leave. So this trip has been pushed off for about two years. And you can read here or you can access the blog. It was an amazing learning experience for our students. And I do really want to thank Tara Evans. She is in our tech department at VTVLC, and she coordinated this. She is incredible. If anybody is looking for tips and tricks about traveling or diving, she's the person I need to go to. The other opportunities that are pieces that I'll share is that on early April, we had our online and beyond learning conference in Stowe. It was always a great opportunity to connect with educators around the states. And I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge that it'd be celebrated two big things, which was instructional assistance day. So we know that we couldn't do the work without our instructional assistants. And on May 1st, it was principal's day, and this week is teacher appreciation week. So it's been a busy week. One thing that I will say, we're saying, as I was down in Washington DC, and we got a personal tour out of Peter Raltschew's office, and it was actually a former VTVLC student who had taken AP government with us, and she's like, I'm using what I learned. And I was like, this is awesome. So it all kind of worked out really great. She's like, will you tell Mrs. Peniman that I'm actually doing what I was going to do? And I was like, I sure will. So that was super cool. She's a sophomore at Dartmouth right now. And so she's like, I'm, I'm enjoying everyone. So that's the director's report. Any questions about any of those fun and fantastic things? No. Enrollments, if you are tracking our enrollments from month to month, you'll see that we went down this month. That is a good thing because our students are finishing their classes because it's the end of the school year. And then again, we'll see our enrollments go up around June as we process a summer enrollments and fall enrollments. But it's kind of nice to see them going down. It means kids are successfully completing their classes. I also put in here our partnership information. If you're familiar with VTVLC, we do have a co-op model where schools can put in a teaching partner. And we sent these out in the early March. And so this is where we currently are on our partnership agreements, which ones have come in, who's a teaching partner, which districts we're reaching out to, to see what they would like to do. And I think that's it for me.
Any questions for Ashley? Anything VTVLC related? All right. Thank you. State YCT update.
Not much movement. I think it, there's a bigger conversation that's supposed to start happening about education in the state of Vermont. I have heard two different versions of how long it's going to take them to have that conversation. I've heard mid-June, and that was through Bob, and I heard from a legislature, legislator, June 30th. May 30th, excuse me, yeah, June 30. And I think the conversation is going to go lots of different ways. I think it's going to be who's on the committees that get to have a further conversation, maybe the biggest part of that. I wrote a letter that I forwarded to you today, last week, about the 3% on the base rate reduction that happened to us at budget time. And I encourage our program advisories to send it, and also my peers around the state to have their, for them to send it and for their program advisory. I think it gained a little traction. I got a call, and I was working with Gwen Bailey Rowe, who is the director up at the Newport Tech Center. Mike Markop, who is the chair of House Commerce and Economic Development, longtime supporter of CTE, he's from the Newport area. He had some questions, isn't it? And I said, he can call me. He called me. I shared the timeline of how it was a little bit of a gimmicky kind of thing of how it all transpired. He committed that he would talk to the governor's office, the secretary and house leadership, and hopefully it gets addressed in the budget bill. But we won't know until they wrap it up, and the budget bill is almost always the last thing they do. And so hopefully it makes it in there. But that's you want to do something for CTE, well, what, how about you do this today? So we'll see what happens. He was very prompt, called the next day, so hopefully gained some traction.
Any questions about machinations regarding education CTE? Okay, great. See, next is the spend down update.
Yeah, it's, we haven't, other than what I've told you, it's about, what I told you, $43,000 is what we spent. We have 50. See, ballsy beats me to the number. I have it written down here somewhere.
You got about 57,000 left.
What'd she say?
About 57,000.
Oh, yeah. You know, when you play your little sister and you let her win, that, that's really what you saw. Not really. Not really.
Okay. Any questions on the spend down update? Okay. Negotiations update. We met yesterday, and we will have an update for you, an executive session on that. Moving on to new business, payment of unused vacation days.
Yeah, this is a this is some language in administrative contracts at RBTC and VTVLC. Derek and I will figure out if we're going to ask, but VTVL, next month, VTVL the administrators have submitted formal requests for payment for five unused vacation days. And we would ask for a motion for us to honor that portion of the contract.
For those that are new to the board, this is normal this time of year.
This is the time of year.
Yeah. Any questions?
That we honor the request of the five unused vacation days by the VTVLC administrators?
And I'll amend your motion, Chris, with your permission to name them. Ashley Newton, Jennifer Freibusch, Jennifer Hines, and Jessica Leo. You good with that?
Perfectly fine.
Great. Someone second, and Andrew seconds the motion. Discussion, questions? Okay, those in favor, please raise hands or say aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you. World of Discovery, you want to explain this one?
Yeah, World of Discovery is a private entity that provides childcare onsite in a space that is right next to our human services program. So it really is the lab for our students. They work very, very closely together. Every year at this time, when we know what Springfield's going to charge us per square footage, we pass that along. And then we up, we do a lease agreement with them to reflect the pass-through for that space. So you do all the math on that, and we would ask for a motion to approve at least for, at least to be $1,450, and it really is just a reflection of them using the same space here that we do.
Any questions on that before I ask for a motion?
What time period is the 1,450?
July 1 through
The fiscal year.
Fiscal year.
But it's 1,450 for the full year.
No, per month, per month, yes.
Have we ever explored a multiple with them?
And we're paying that to Springfield.
They, they pay us, we pay Springfield because it's our base. They're designated to use it.
Do we not, is the rate going to change every year?
Right.
So, so to explain the obvious, when this building was built, it was funding to the Springfield School District, and the Springfield School District owns the Howard Dean Education Center with criteria about how the space can be used, which we won't go down that hole.
I'm the condo association chair.
Yeah, you're Macy's, you're the anchor tenant, if you will.
And has that changed from last year? About how much was it last year?
Hundreds change. It went up, and it really is what more lies to be, burn more wood chips to the, the plow contract change. And it's all, there's a big formula that Springfield does and passes it on to us.
Any other questions on that or concerns? If I ask for a motion to renew the occupancy contract with World of Discovery III at the rate of $1,450 per month for FY26? Jess, Andrew seconds. Discussion on the motion? Those in favor, raise hands or say aye. Anybody opposed? Thank you. Great. Where are we here? Perkins. I assume that's Derek or Scott?
That's me. This is the Perkins accountability data. So this is for last year's group of students. So because we're, we accept Perkins funds, about $130,000, that means that our benchmarks we have to meet, like any tech center in the state or tech center, tech center in the country. Some of those are negotiated, and some of those are just set. Even when we negotiate, you've got a feeling that they're set anyways. Those are four-year graduation rate, proficiency in reading, mathematics, science, post-program placement. What are they doing after they get done with us? Obviously, non-traditional program concentration. So there's programs that are determined to be male and female, and how many take different programs? What percentage is that? Did they attain a post-secondary credential? That was $16,000 we just talked about. Did they, well, post-secondary credential, excuse me, that's IRC, that's industry credential that matters. Then there are post-secondary credits. That's the $16,000 we talked about. And do they participate in work-based learning? The good news is, ever since Perkins Five came about, we've met our goals, and we are meeting our overall goals as a center, meaning that we are above the goal or within 10% of the goal. This is good news. Because if we didn't do that, then we'd have to write a corrective action plan. And if we continued not to do that, then we would be, we would have to either maybe not accept money if a certain program wasn't doing well, or take 30% of the money that we get and designate it to fix whatever it is. Now, in the there are, overall, we are meeting those benchmarks. There may be specific groups of students. We may not be meeting them or specific programs. We will address those. I'm a little apprehensive. I don't say apprehensive. I wonder how it's going to turn out in that in previously this year, I talked about how for FY25, they raised the standard. So for instance, some programs rather than have a one college class, you have to have two college classes, or you have a college class credits and IRC. So it'll be interesting to see how that plays out because the data that we get for this year will be reflective of that, and we may have to adjust. But the good news is, we're meeting the goal. That's good. That's very, very good.
And the numbers that are yellow, is the reason they're yellow is because they're not at 90%? Or what's the number they're supposed to be at to not be?
They have to be at the negotiated target for that particular group. So I look under math in business, only 40% of the students met the math proficiency rate rather than the rate of 51%. So like, if one kid would have done better, then we would have met the goal for business, and business wouldn't have the yellow in that area.
Oh, I see. The negotiated targets up at the top.
So there's no yellows at the top. That's good. The yellows down below.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. I'm proud of our non-traditional rate because that is cool. That means people are doing things they shouldn't do and challenging themselves in skill areas that maybe they wouldn't, society wouldn't think that they would normally do, I guess is the best way to put it. And the post-secondary credential, we're knocking it out of the park. The target is 15%, and we're at 68. And we're more than double on the post-secondary credits. So pretty good stuff. The other document that I gave you is not a document. Well, I did manipulate the document in one way. And I'll get a laugh when I, I'm calling my shot here. This document was prepared by the business manager at Central Vermont Career Center. Central Vermont Career Center was trying to point out what is the utilization of tech centers around the state. They want to build a new tech center because they're turning way over 100 kids. So this document, and you have it, is, and I remember Carl did this. And it was like utilization. So the number of kids that are available and how many of, what percentage of them are attending the technical center in their region. So for this particular year, this is how I manipulated it. I sorted it so the center with the highest utilization rate was at the top. That's the River Valley Technical Center. At, we're capturing 20% of the available population, nine through 12 in our region. And we're one of the top in the region, in the state, as far as over the six semester average. I would draw your attention to the Essex Burlington area in that there, between the two centers, there is about a little over 7% of the available population, which is a shame considering that's their largest industrial area in the state. They need to build capacity there. So we should feel good that kids in our region like to come to our school because it is a school of choice, and that's really good. But I did manipulate it, so our name was at the top, full disclosure.
Questions about this, either, either one of the documents, the reports? I guess, you know, my, my whatever, wise guy question is understanding the concept of embedded credits is a whole other rabbit hole regarding CTE. You would think students would get these skills, mathematics, language arts at their homeschools, not necessarily through the specific tech center program. So what are the expectations on tech center instructors to help improve these numbers? And how, and should they be doing it?
Well, I think that we look for patterns, right? In that this group of students is a student that, group of students that had left, right? They're, they're been living in, so rather than going, oh my God, what are we going to do in this one particular area? If year after year, it shows business, students aren't getting enough math, then maybe we should put a little focus and attention on that. Or if it's ultra low in one particular area, but if you go down and did the math, like if one or two more kids pass the particular test or we were within 10%, should we spend much time on that particular area if it's one kid in one year? I will say that we do we embed academics, but we don't go out of our way to meet these particular benchmarks. And as a real focus thing, we do try to motivate the students to do the very best that they can. You're going to be there an hour, you should give your best effort, which is, I think, half the battle when weighing on, you know, weighing in collecting interests, collecting their effort based on the effort we give with them every day. And they do try hard on it, and students do gain, and we're meeting the goal, which is great.
Yeah, just following up on your question though, do you ever, can you sort the data to be able to see, like, the kids from Green Mountain are scoring this way, or the kids from Springfield are scoring this way to be able
That is possible. We haven't, we haven't done that. That is possible.
And I do think your point about like, we're kind of accountable for these, yet somebody else is responsible for delivering the instruction. It might be
But conversely, also sending that data back to the school.
Exactly, exactly.
Let me make a note of that. I'll see what we can do.
Hey, the way we usually roll is what can we do in-house with the students we have?
Yeah.
Just because it, you know, that's like our locus of control, but that's it, yeah.
But we could go back to our respective course and say, hey, our students are
Yeah, yeah.
struggling in this area.
I know one director did that in one of their meetings with all the school people, the administrators of the sending schools. They prompted the conversation about three years earlier, your school, as me saying, we never do, what, how are you organizing your flow of math classes? For instance, I'm just remembering the conversation. And what the data proves is the schools perform better in math in this particular, it's a Rutland region. When they offered math in, in the traditional way, algebra one, algebra two, geometry, organized like that, as opposed to these, some schools go to this integrated math approach where math one, two, three, four, and it's kind of mixed up in a way that is maybe a logical sequence of how they view it. I think Springfield does that kind of approach. I don't, I'm not sure. Well, in that particular region, it showed the schools that did that kind of traditional cadence to how they did their math, that that was a correlation that that particular group was able to come to. I remember the conversation I had with Melissa.
But that may be just aligning the testing stuff too.
Yeah. There's all, yeah.
Any comments for anyone online? All right. We've been in the room. So next month will be our Perkins Plan, right? Isn't that usually where we are on?
It'll be an updated version of our Perkins Plan if we get it in time from the agency, and they get the authorization from the feds. We're hearing that we should see something from them on May 19th. And because last year was our big CLNA year, it will be a continuance of that. So it'll be a lighter version, but you know, I think we'll continue, we continue with the same things with the heavy middle school stuff.
Yeah, most of the budget is pretty much locked up. It's just, will they give us enough money to cover the things that we've already been doing? The question this year, or for next year.
There's an indication from the federal administration that you're, we're going to get what we're supposed to get, but that changes.
Any other questions on the Perkins information? Okay, superintendent's report. Okay, superintendent's report.
Okay. I thought it was gonna be a short one, I'm gonna highlight, um. We hosted capital for the day here. Uh, we had Jay Ramsey from Workforce Development, uh, the deputy commissioner of the Department of Labor. Is she the interim or is she actually, because Kendall?
Uh, did, well, the commissioner hasn't left yet, so the woman who will be the interim.
Okay, the deputy was here and Jill Briggs Campbell, who was the deputy secretary of education. Uh, real good, uh, outpouring of support from our industry partners, had a great session and, uh, it was all last minute, but we made it happen. Uh, we've been having a lot of visits from, uh, police and criminal justice type people, uh, here. Uh, we had a death investigator here, Amy Nolan, uh, visit the criminal justice class. Uh, they went to the police academy earlier in the month. Uh, there was another one here where they, and they were down at the fire grounds um, because they do their tactics as far as filling entry and how to do that in teams with paintball, no, no, it's the smaller ones. Airsoft was way safer and we get a lot of other people, uh, with the police and from local departments involved. It's a Skills USA month, on the eleventh, we were awarded, uh, gold medals in TV production. Two students from Fall Mountain, Kyle Rambin and Sarah Denowitz, they'll be going to, uh, Atlanta, extemporaneous speech, middle school, kid from Riverside, Nelson Bosley. Quiz Bowl B, um, team there. We're going to Nationals, automated manufacturing, team D, um, group of our students going Nationals and C, so we're sending two groups to Nationals, job skills demonstration, again, in middle school students and middle school robotics. We're the only tech center that brought middle school students to Skills USA. That's your robotics club and Mr. Gray influencing them. Extemporaneous speech, we got a silver Jake Costrip from Bellas Falls. Um, Quiz Bowl C got a silver medal and bronze medal to our middle school robotics team. And we had Juan Lopez from Bellas Falls in restaurant service. Derek, talk about the job fair, employment fair with Bob chiming in.
I would say we had, uh, right around eighty folks show up for our employment fair. We got good feedback from our employers. I mean, obviously we always want more, but word on the street is that's pretty decent turnout, it's post-COVID for an employment fair, uh, outside of Chatham County. We're still working on trying to get it at a time when students can attend, um, but there's some politics there we're working through. What am I missing, Bob?
No, you're right. Man, I think the employers are pleased. Yeah, and I want to thank Derek, uh, you know, for all of his work on this and all the months of preparation. Um, and, uh, it was an interesting mix of people that were there too. I think we had thirty-some odd employers anyways.
Yeah, I think that's thirty-four, something like that. Well, and there's a great team and it's certainly, I mean, Amanda really does a ton to make that happen.
Yep.
And Taylor from the Chamber.
The Chamber, yeah. So, good job, good job and appreciate all the effort into it.
Uh, we had tech time, uh, we had a stock market exploration, uh, tree climbing and industrial trade sculpture, uh, after-school program. Kelly Brooker Campbell was working on, uh, some STEAM lessons and manufacturing engineering with third grade students at Weathersfield. Tommy Williams was here with his tactical potato, who was all the rage on Facebook and famous actor for Pettington Dog. Yeah, that potato is a sensation. We were just lucky to have him. The Horticulture Natural Resources Program is starting some of its townscape projects and they work with the garden club in Springfield. I think, still think they're working with Chester. And our advanced manufacturing engineering program went to the Formula Hybrid Electric uh, race, I think pre-trials or something at the Hampshire Motor Speedway. And it's really fast electric cars on the track. That's it.
Great. Questions for Scott? Lot of great stuff going on.
Yeah, I thought it was gonna be a short month because we had a week, short on activities because we had a week off in there, but I guess not.
And it's on your agenda and we've talked about it before, if you're able to come on May twenty-seventh for the National Technical Honor Society inductions and the annual awards night for the tech center, I think you'd be tickled by it and it's just, it's, it's
Yeah, National Technical Honor Society, twenty-six?
Twenty-seventh.
Twenty-seven kids. And they also did a food drive where they collected two hundred and thirty pounds of, uh, food. And delivered it and the winning, how did, how did they get the ice cream? How did that happen? The program that brought the most stuff in had ice cream sundaes. I think that they didn't get ice cream sundaes in the morning, they got something else, donuts in the morning, not ice cream sundaes and they probably, the kids would probably went for it, but yeah.
All right.
What time is that?
Yeah.
So you'll get a, you'll get a formal invite on the twenty-seventh, but it's usually five o'clock for the induction and then six o'clock for the award assembly. And it's right out there on the term line and it's lovely.
That's a sweet event.
Yeah, I've been very lucky the last few years, it's been perfect weather, so.
Why, why, why?
I knocked.
You've got a rain date and a backup location.
Okay. All right, anything else for, anything else for open session?
I knocked over that.
Look for a motion pursuant to Title I VSA, section three thirteen, to enter executive session to discuss the teacher agreement negotiations because premature general public knowledge would place people at a substantial disadvantage, inviting Scott and Derek. Would someone make that motion, please? Andrew, seconded by Liza. Any discussion? Those in favor, raise hands or say aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Thank you. Going to executive session. Derek? Okay, we're back in open session. It's five, got five fifty-two. I don't believe we have any other business.
We do not.
Again, National Technical Center Honor Society inductions and tech center awards night is May twenty-seventh. Hope to see folks there and our next board meeting is June fourth. There's no other business. We are adjourned.
Yeah, you all, you'll get a formal invite for that.